You ready?
You're on record.
Okey doke. Uh, announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it's being in conducted, conducted in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash six et sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Uh, Nora, if you would.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Ms. Gragnani.
Here.
Mr. Joskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Puzzin.
Mr. Willens.
Here.
We'll have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
All right, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin tonight with the swearing in of Mr. Mazzarella.
So I can swear as much as I want?
Nah, I don't think so.
What time do you swear?
Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Chris Mazzarella.
I, Chris Mazzarella.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me get up.
So help me get up.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
That I will impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Board of Adjustments.
Board of Adjustments.
Regular members.
Regular members.
Township of Precipice, Troy Hills.
Township of Precipice, Troy Hills.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. So help me get up. It's longer than the last one. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, and um, our attorney has advised that it would be uh best practice to swear in our um, our experts at every meeting. So on that advice, we shall do so.
Okay, Mr. Chadwick, you raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. You swear that any testimony that you shall give tonight shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes. That's an expert here now.
That's it.
Okay.
Um, that taken care of, is there anyone here uh in the audience who wishes to bring business before this board that is not on tonight's agenda? That would only be you two. They're on the agenda. Okay, uh, we have one correspondence requesting that we carry application twenty three fifteen to April third.
April third.
Any objections?
No objections.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is moved. This brings us to Tuccharelli's for the third time, I think. Fourth?
Third.
Third, come on, come on down. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Wow, they did their homework, huh?
No, I just heard everybody say.
What you, what you didn't see is his meal, the little picture, he had a picture of the meal. It was a big pound cake.
That was my dessert.
Oh, no, that was your meal, I thought. That was your dessert?
That was dessert.
Oh, sweet.
Sure. You're both gonna testify, right?
Yeah.
Okay, you swear that the testimony you give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yeah.
Okay, can you, starting with you, just state your name, spell your last name, please.
My name is Marco Tuccharelli. T U C C I A R E L L I.
Thank you.
Carla Tuccharelli, T U C C I A R E L L I.
I'm sorry, what was the first name?
Carla, Carla, Carla. Sorry. C A R L A.
I like the first ti- the first way better.
Yeah, I do. Can you be seated?
All right, why don't you uh bring us up to speed? What uh, what have you accomplished since we last met?
So if I could uh approach and distribute this uh booklet.
Thank you. Make a nice binder, huh?
You guys don't mess around this time.
Okay, so for the record, I'm going to mark this as, I believe, eight five this protection exhibit based upon my review of the video.
Okay. Okay, so since um, since the last time we met was uh three months ago, um, so we prepared this booklet to summarize all the concerns expressed at the previous meetings, uh especially regarding the roofed entryway, um, and also responses to these concerns, including uh input from the township engineer and uh data from the sewer department of the township of Precipice. Uh, so I'll start, my, my name is Marco Tuccharelli, as I said earlier. Carla and I have uh owned the property on Ninety Morris Ave uh since two thousand sixteen. Um, I personally have lived in Mount Tabor for the previous twelve years. Carla, I, yeah.
I have lived in Mount Tabor my whole life, um, thirty, oh, thirty-seven years. I'm still thirty-seven.
You're on the thirty-eight.
Um, if you count the year before. My mother uh also has lived in Mount Tabor her entire life, sixty-six years, and my mother, my, my nana, which is my grandmother, has also lived in Mount Tabor for eighty-five years. She moved in when she was one, so basically her whole life. And our children are fifth generation Taborites, so they're loving the area as we all do.
So I'm uh, I'm employed by Skanska, uh, USA, they have an office in Precipice, actually. Uh, I'm a civil engineer and uh, uh, I'm actually preparing for my professional license, my professional engineer license. Um, I'm also a member of the Mount Tabor uh fire department. I've been a member since uh, for seven years, so since seventeen. So right, tonight, uh, we are applying for relief to construct a carport uh with a permeable paper driveway on the west side of the property with a four-foot setback, uh, six foot are required by zoning. And we're also applying for relief on a previously constructed roofed basement entryway on the east side of the property with a five-foot setback, ten feet required by zoning. The roofed basement entrance was constructed to alleviate rainwater that entered the, through the basement door. In the last six weeks, we have had four major uh rainstorms with precipitations of two in, two or more inches in the township. Before uh, uh, we roofed the basement entryway, any rain lasting more than twenty minutes would result in water in the basement. We had no, we didn't have any water enter through the basement doorway during the storms thanks to this roofed uh entryway. The bottom of the basement door is thirty-two inches below the foundation grade. Uh, at the entry to the structure, the grade is twenty-two inches below the foundation grade. And there is pictures uh in the section that you see there, listed as photos. So that means that the ground slopes towards the uh basement door. A concern raised at the October meeting was a PVC pipe. Um, uh, although this pipe was confirmed dry by the township engineer during his visit on the property, um, this drainage pipe, pipe has been removed. We don't need to talk about it. The more has agreed uh during the last meeting.
So as of now, the PVC pipe that was addressed at the last, last meeting has been removed. It's no longer there.
Yes. Um, a copy of the email from uh Mr. Brendan Kreiser, the principal, principal engineer for the township of Precipice, Troy Hills, uh follows. Uh, it's attached in the engineering section. He states, uh, there are no issues with drainage of stormwater runoff coming from Marco's property, Marco being myself. Uh, he also states that we, we have adequately addressed the C variance memo dated May, for, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. So the letter is attached in the um engineering section. An additional comment during the October meeting was the length of the entryway. I explained the reason was the presence of a sanitary uh sewer line on the east side of the house, nine feet from the door, so right on the edge of the um roofed entryway. And this pipe is ten inches deep into the ground. This sewer line doesn't allow the ground to be pitched away from the door to minimize the rainwater to flow inside the basement. I contacted the Precipice Sewer Department to confirm, to confirm that the sanitary waste line is located on the east side of the house. And uh, I, they actually gave me a copy of um the nineteen eighty record of the um, of the, of the sketch showing the uh, the line on the property. And it's also in the engineering section.
Is that, is that the second document in your tab?
Yes, in the engineering section. The first page is the uh let, email from Brendan Kreiser, principal engineer of the township. And the second document is the um, it's a record from the um sewer department showing where the uh sewer line is located on my property.
So this is a document that you obtained from the Precipice Sewer Department?
Yes, yep. Page five. So at the board's request uh last time, so I, I met with the two contractors seeking an alternative, because that's what we have discussed. Uh, both of them uh said, due to the condition and the presence of the sewer line, they suggested that I pursue legalizing the existing structure.
Did you do what?
Did I pursue legalizing it? Um, as the most effective way to prevent water from entering the basement. And I'm gonna quote what they said, in this condition here, without a cover, water will always.
All right, you're on record again.
Okay.
You may continue.
So as I was saying, uh, we met with the, with the uh two contractors as uh, we were, we agreed last time. And um, um, they suggested pursuing the legalizing, legalizing the existing structure as it is as the most effective.
So they suggested that because there was no other fix?
Or that they, no, yes, that they could provide. Uh, I actually had a third contractor that I contacted recently. I'm waiting, I'm still waiting for an answer, so I'm, I'm still trying. Other options, right, alternatives. Um, so, and as they say, like quoting them, without a cover, water will always find its way. So when, when you visited my site, uh, you would have seen the structure and the condition that I've just described. Um, on the west side of the house, instead, uh, the carport is needed to protect the vehicles parked on the driveway. We have a big, beautiful oak tree that makes a lot of acorns. These acorns cause hundreds of dents and scratches on the vehicles. We have no interest in removing the tree. We like having trees around us, that's what uh Mount Tabor is about as well. Uh, so we're looking to preserve the tree and also to, to protect our property, the vehicles. Uh, so the carport will prevent all the physical damage and fiscal per, uh, financial burden for the vehicles. Um, I'll just go through this booklet, so you're seeing there is an engineering section with the, with some uh memos. And then the, the photos, look, showing uh seven pictures, uh, showing the uh roofed entryway from different sides. Um, also the, let's say the, the, the page nine um shows the side of the house. That's the view from the street. And the distance from the adjacent, the adjacent's house. Then if you go to page ten, you can see the property line marked. The sewer line is marked on the uh, on the picture as well. And then the next pictures, there is more pictures of the entryway, more pictures of the sewer line marked and uh, and, and in, on page fourteen, actually. And fourteen A, you can see it out the ground slopes towards the uh, the door. And that's why the water would run in. on the section drawings, there is uh, um, there are five drawings the, that represent the um, what um, I, I, I will leave it as it is, but um, last time, uh, some uh, um, concerns were expressed in terms of the beauty of the structure. So I would uh propose, I could propose some modifications to the roofed entryway. Uh, so, yes, you can see in the drawings, if you go through the entryway, as it was planned, because I didn't continue, I didn't finish it, the entryway will mimic the existing structure, the house. And uh, will have features that will match the character of uh Mount Tabor. So um, there's five drawings, you can please go through. Um, that's how we could uh potentially modify it.
Is drawing number one, is that from the street view?
Yeah.
Drawing for number one, it's from the street view.
Okay.
Drawing number two shows a door. Is that the existing door?
That's existing.
Or is that a new door at the opening of the shed area?
That's the existing door. If you wanna.
The shed will be open as shown on page fourteen.
The, um, yeah, so that's the door, yeah.
The fourteen A has a picture of the door.
Fourteen and four, fourteen has the picture of the door, uh, under the, and the, the roofed entrance, yeah.
Okay, help me a couple things here.
Yeah.
The, what we're calling, uh, uh, two or three questions. What we're calling now the shed, you're purp- proposing to take that off and put this new structure that you have on your drawings on there in replacement of that?
Um, I would uh like to maintain the uh envelope, let's say, of the the structure.
You're gonna keep walls or you're gonna change the roof?
I would change the roof, yes.
Cause you're gonna make it a little hip roof.
Because that's.
Now you've got just a shed roof.
And then I would uh add the uh flatboards on the side, the carports, so they mimic the house.
And are you also adding windows to the side?
Well, uh, yeah, uh, that would, uh, just to make it look better, I wanna say, uh, so that uh, I, I don't need to put windows.
It was an idea of adding to it.
If that's not a, I don't need, I don't need to spend the extra money, absolutely, just, it was more to make it look nicer, because there was a concern was that.
I have, I have another question in regard to the roof line and the design that you have.
Yes.
That's gonna be open, the front is not gonna be enclosed?
I would, I would say that uh, this is our, uh, this is a preliminary uh drawing. Every um, everything will be subject to the building department's approval.
Okay, because I mean, you're concerned about the water.
Oh.
Over, you know, coming into the, that entranceway, but yet if you have an opening in this.
In the front.
In the, in the front, isn't the water, yes, isn't that, isn't the water going to be going in?
Again, this is just.
Depending on the, the direction of the rain?
Yeah. Yes, absolutely, I mean, that, that one could be, that maybe some like light wood can be put in the back, absolutely, but again, the, the, the entrance is eight feet. Um, so hopefully that, those eight feet would prevent it, but would be, I, I have no objections to um cover that. It is just, again, the preliminary, I would have to some official drugs.
What you're proposing is just preliminary and this is not exactly what is going to be proposed in this area which we are calling the shed area, or I'm calling the shed area?
I, I say uh preliminary because I don't have approval from the building department, so any subj- uh, any modification would have to be approved by them. Um, I, for me, this could be a final, but I, I wanna be respectful of the the next steps, I wanna say in the.
That's not the way it works, you, you give your proposal.
Yes.
This board, and they approve the design, building department only approves the size of the two-by-fours or whatever.
Okay, okay, I apologize for.
I think you, the questions are, the roof is gonna be changed to a hip roof as reflected on page nineteen.
And uh.
And then the second modification would be the windows is also shown. Uh, but that's on page nineteen, that's page.
That's on the drawing.
That is, that's the door in the back, oh, okay. On page eighteen shows the windows. And lastly, if you would close in the end of the shed with a door uh, and finish the sides and the colors as per your house and the diagrams. That's the suggestion I have to you to offer to the board.
So he's agreeing with you just put the, put the doors on the front, right, John?
Yep, I think it gets to the question of closing it in and keeping the water.
A door's in the very, at the very top, absolute, I mean uh.
I don't know about a second door.
A, a door at the front.
So we have the door against the house and then a door where the edge of the entryway.
There will be, absolutely.
The shed will look finished, the inside of it, you know, it, it's pretty rough the way it is now.
Absolutely, I agree. Uh, that's why I, I, I was saying earlier, it's not finished and I understand if uh, so I wanna, I would like to add, the reason why the, the roof is pitched in one direction right now um, was to collect all the water falling on the roof, on the proposed roof and direct it to the gutter. But I could change it to the, to, to, you know, to reflect more the, the character of the town, I have no problems. And to address um Mrs. Gragnani uh concern. Uh, so as, as right now, the front is not closed and water doesn't go in. So I would say potentially we don't need to close the front, but absolutely, that's a extremely valid suggestion that I, I would like to consider, absolutely.
I have to agree with uh, Mr. Chadwick.
No, absolutely.
Putting the door in the front, I think would be better, aesthetically look much, much better.
Okay.
Sounds good, absolutely.
Where are the downspouts going?
Downspouts, one second. Take a note. So the downspouts, um, so if you look at the, picture thirteen.
And that's gonna be staying, you're not, you're not gonna be changing the downspouts or your, your, your gutters, correct?
So, so this, this downspout here is the original, it's from the house. Uh, it, it goes to the ground.
Yes.
And uh, there is actually draining uh pipes under the, on the ground, they go to the street. And uh, when uh Brendan Kreiser, the principal engineer of the township of Precipice, and he was uh at my house, we actually tested every gutter and every uh drainage, and we went to the um inlet B on the survey, and we verified the water would actually get to the street. So that additional gutter line on the roofed entryway was added. And as you can see, the downspout is connected to the existing one, so all the water actually doesn't fall anywhere on the property.
It goes underground?
It goes underground.
So I'm looking at page sixteen?
Okay.
Thirteen, thirteen. One, three.
Yeah, but the, the diagram on sixteen, I guess you just don't show it tied in?
Well.
That would be the, the um.
Oh, sixteen is the other side.
That would be looking from the street view, so that would be a different.
Also, also this one, well, also this one is the proposed, because uh, um, it, having the roof pitched in one direction, I, in that, that way I can actually collect all the water into the downs, existing downspout.
Right, like you need on both sides.
But both sides, one side I can direct it to the existing one, the other side I would have to.
True.
So is that be discharged five feet from the property line?
No, it's, it's still inside my property.
Is it five feet inside the property line?
Five feet inside property, that's exactly five feet inside property.
So back to page in the photos, page ten. I'm looking at your property line, I'm looking at where the downspout would come out. It looks like you're essentially dumping on the property line.
On the property line, so within, three, five feet within, um.
Is that water gonna be forced onto the neighbor's property?
Well, if uh the roof wasn't there, the, the, the water would go.
You want it there, so where is that gutter gonna go?
We were hoping to keep this slanted roof.
Well, I could, I could, um, yes.
It's the original point.
But um.
But you did.
I could do, I could uh make a little small dry well, like a very confined dry well.
Okay, you, you, you've been willing to make some changes, I guess you're here originally, so.
Yeah.
You put on this shed yourself, you built that on yourself, correct?
Yes.
Without any approvals and stuff like that?
Yeah.
That was to alleviate the water problem you had in your basement?
Yes.
The drain that's at the door going into your basement, was that drain always there?
The drain when they.
In front of the door, the metal, the metal drain.
No, that was uh, I added that because uh, that was before the roof entryway was built. I thought there was a way to do it, but it didn't work out, so I built that.
So you put that drain in there?
Yes.
Okay, so you had, you had water coming into your basement, you put the drain in. That didn't stop the water problem.
It didn't stop the water.
So then you build the shed, so the drain, but you're already test, I, that the slope of the property goes down that way. So if I, 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 I'm finding it hard to understand how just putting a shed on top to take the rainwater and push it over, wouldn't, you still wouldn't have rainwater coming in, in, down through that shed area, I, I, I don't understand how that.
So if the, I, I don't know, I, I don't, can you repeat the question, please?
Okay. You're here because you built in addition without any approvals or permits, okay? And that infringed on your neighbor's property line, apparently, and your neighbor filed a complaint, okay? That's why you're here.
And that is.
I'm here to approve a variance, to get a, I'm here to get a variance approved.
Yeah, to, to approve what you'd already built.
Yes.
The reason you did those things was because you had water coming in your basement and you tried two or three things to try and correct that, and it hadn't worked until you built the shed.
One, I tried one.
I'm not a, I'm not a, I'm not a landscaper or construction engineer, but I'm finding, hard to understand how that shed that you put on there, the cover, would alleviate your water problem in your basement, I, I just don't understand.
So the, the roof, the roof covers enough of the property, so that the water, so that the water doesn't hit the uh, the portion of land that would uh carry the water inside the basement.
So that's why you built the shed out as far as you build it?
Because, yes, because I could, the, what I really wanted to do was try to slope it in the other direction, but there is a sewer line right there. So it wasn't my preference building a roofed entryway, I wanna say.
So you, just, not to interrupt, but we keep using the word shed, but isn't it really a covered entryway? It's not a shed like you're storing a, a wheelbarrow there, it's a covered entryway.
Well, he was storing stuff on that report.
More of a porter. Come on, I'm.
That's okay, that's.
I, yeah, please.
It's empty now.
It's absolutely meant to go for rain. There's absolutely no need to store anything there. Um, the, the, the pictures that you see right now are the current conditions. That's what you see, that's what you're gonna make.
You've got the drainage handled for half the roof, the roof is gonna be removed and you're going to put a hip roof there. So we have a half of a roof area that's to the street side to deal with that water. And I would suggest to the board that we simply make it subject to the approval of the township engineer as to how much of a small basin he's gonna need for that roof area that's gonna be of thirty-something square feet.
So your suggestion is that the resolution indicate that uh, the applicant is going to take care of all drainage on his own property?
Yes.
To condition the ground engineer.
Whether that's a dry well or tied into the existing system?
Yes.
To prevent water runoff onto his neighbor's property?
Yes.
So that, that backside where you have the drain, where it's tied into the main, the, the one from the second floor, right, where did, that goes underground out to the street? Alright, so my thought is if we're doing a double pitched roof on, or a regular roof, if you had a drain on the front, you have that spot on top of the wall there, does that run all in?
Can you please refer to the picture you're talking about?
Picture number ten, page ten, sorry. From what I'm looking at, it looks like above that wall is just grass and dirt, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, with, with the option of burying another line under there out to the street in the front, get the water out of the way there, I mean, cause if you look at, if you, if you're just looking at this picture, any water that's not
any water that's not collected now is gonna go right down, the slope is right down into the, the neighbor's line.
Yes.
So I'm just offering a suggestion, the thought, I know it's, you know, I'm not spending my own money.
Yeah, it's gotta come, sorry.
I think that's what Bill said, is, is keep it on his property or into the, uh, public system.
In other words, if it's possible to tie it into the applicant's existing drainage system that already goes to the street.
I mean, I, I would have.
If it's not possible to do it that way, then figure out another process subject to the approval of the town engineer that does not cause the water to be discharged onto the neighbor's property, either through dry well or some other system.
Absolutely, if I, if I can add, um. I actually.
Yes, yes.
That's, that's, that's perfect. Um, I believe, I mean, I, I spoke into the engineer about water. And, um, but absolutely, we can, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll confirm with him. Um, I believe the dry well, uh, there is an ordinance from twenty twenty-one. I cannot say which one, but he, he mentioned it to me, that if, uh, the improvement is more than five hundred feet, is that, that's when you require, is required, you're required to build a dry well. But I absolutely will, uh, look into that.
I think you understand the concern of the board.
Yeah.
That they don't want you to discharge rainwater onto your neighbor's property.
I wouldn't want that either, absolutely.
I'm a little confused too, that, that, so. You build the shed, we have, that wasn't approved, so we need it for that. Then you come back with another drawing, which, the new structure you're proposing, your drawing, looks very nice. Looks a lot nicer than what you have up there. Alright? But, but my question is, it creates another drain problem for you with the tapered roof, okay? So that's, that's what I'm looking at here, and maybe I'm wrong, but why can't you improve the look of this structure you have here? And keep your, cause right now, are you having any discharge water problem into your neighbor?
No.
Would your neighbor agree with that right now?
Yeah.
I mean, with a, we'll, we'll see.
Okay, well, right, we'll, we'll hear more, we'll hear more from them, but the point being right now, you've alleviated your problem on your property and your basement with this addition.
Yes.
The drain you have right now is going into the main drain that goes out to the street, which is great. If you change that roof pitch, you're gonna have another drain coming down, that's gonna create another problem for you, okay? But this thing that you got up there ain't too good looking either. So if you cover that in and put a door on it, a few other things, might make it look better, put a window in it, whatever. But I'm not sure why you have to change that whole structure.
If we could, so you're saying to leave the roof as is?
I'm asking a question.
Is that, to keep it as is?
If I can say. If I may speak, so.
Bottom line, you need to finish this shed. There's no fascia, there's no soffit. It's, it looks like slapped together.
It looks like a homemade thing.
Absolutely. Um, I agree with you, absolutely. So the, it's not finished. It was meant always to be looking as the house. I, I would love, I would like to leave it as it is, but last time, because last time it was, um, there was some concern about the look, I, I was, I was like, okay, I'm gonna propose a new way, this good look, but we could leave it as it is and improve on the look.
Okay, we haven't heard from your neighbors. Your, your testimony and the engineers report here states that you don't have a water runoff problem from your property right now, from what you've done, that's what we've got to discuss, okay?
There is no concern.
So why change anything except making this shed, the first thing, look better, okay?
I, if I say, and then, um, I would like it to leave as it is, I just, I was trying to address a concern from the board.
The other question I have for you is, we have a proposed carport, or a carport on the side of the house. We have no pictures of this carport per se.
No, um, that one, uh, it's just, I'm looking for a relief from the setback, uh, for that, and then, uh.
You're looking for relief, uh, can I see what?
Last time, because last time there wasn't not, um, a major issue, then, um, while instead the, the roofed entryway was very well discussed at that time.
But it states you have an existing carport.
No, no, no.
In the front yard, okay.
No, 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 it's not existing, it's not there.
Okay.
We would love it to be there, but.
I kinda feel like we're going on a circle here, and I just need to get some clarification.
Absolutely.
There's no runoff right now.
No.
Correct.
It's not attractive right now. We wanna make it attractive and continue, or, you know, keep going down the road of no runoff. You want to leave it as is.
Yes.
But you've submitted drawings with a different, whole different look.
Only because last time it was, said it was ugly, and so I, I, I'm like, I, I can't.
It's not the biggest issue.
No, no, I'm just saying, I, I don't have to do the.
It's not attractive. Your, your drawings are attractive, but now create an additional drainage problem.
Absolutely, I wanna give options to the board, then.
So why, I, I, I thought we were at the point of leaving this, this new, or creating this new, new design, going to the engineer, ensuring that the engineer confirms that this is not gonna create runoff to the neighbor, and if it does, it's gotta be addressed.
Okay.
Is that the road we wanna go down?
Yeah, it sounds good to me.
Okay, let's go down that road. So this, what you've proposed is much better looking. This is what the board is willing to approve contingent upon the engineer saying it's not creating additional runoff. And we're gonna close the front door.
But would you be willing to accept as it is if?
Well, with the front door that we talked about earlier.
So if we, if we left it as is and just had a cover in front of the entryway.
We don't like as is.
So if we have the siding and, you say you do want the triangle.
Now, he's saying, don't change the roof pitch, paint the aesthetics of everything else.
Okay.
I, I was. This.
Can we clarify?
This is what, but we're not on the same page.
But that's changing the roof pitch, that's why I'm confused, I'm sorry.
But I thought we were saying if the engineer came up with a way to address that, it's not an issue.
If I may, just to say, so if, I thought, somebody said, somebody said, if we leave it as is, we'll make it more beautiful. We'll, uh, we'll add the club board, we'll possibly put a door, um, and we'll, we'll finish it.
Door, siding, matching paint.
Matching paint, everything. We'll leave it as it is, the water, there's no water issue as of right now.
You need to put fascia and soffits on this thing, paint it. I mean, it just looks like it's not done.
But it, absolutely not, because we couldn't finish it, uh, because there was a possibility, that was, again, rejected. So.
Alright, so let's just confirm. The roof pitch is staying.
Staying as is.
You're gonna side it, side it, paint it, close the front, add the door, windows, shrub, and what?
We're putting windows in?
I think we should, it'll look more like a house than a shed.
Put a window on the existing wall, no problem?
I'm sorry?
Window.
Windows?
No problem.
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, that part is solved.
I'm just gonna repeat it one more time.
No, no, she said, she said.
You'll see it written up in the resolution.
So if I could just make sure I've got it correct.
Okay.
One more time.
Okay, the roof is going to remain as is in terms of its pitch and in terms of its drainage.
Correct.
The sides are going to have windows and be finished with siding.
That match the house.
That match the house and matching.
And the same color.
And fascia and so, and, uh, soffits. Have I, have I got it so far?
And a window.
Window.
And windows on each, on each side?
Just on the one side, the street side.
That's the street side, okay.
And shrubs.
Shrubs.
Oh, yeah.
And properly landscaped. And on the side facing the neighbor, that's going to be finished with a, similarly with a door.
Yes.
Have I got that right on the shed?
Yep.
Okay, just wanna make sure I can get it on the thing to the resolution. May I ask a question about the carport?
Yes.
See.
Oh, sorry.
The last time you were here, based upon my review of that meeting, you had indicated that you were willing to reduce the size of the carport from four hundred and eighty-one square feet to four hundred and sixteen square feet. Do you recall that?
From, um, can you repeat that?
Last time you were before this board, there was a discussion about reducing the size of the carport from four hundred and eighty-one square feet to four hundred and sixteen square. Do you have any recollection of that?
I think there wasn't a total improvement, um.
Oh, alright.
Did it respond to the computer?
I'm gonna rewrite the numbers you said, so that I.
Okay, are you, I'm just asking if you remember.
I, I know that I said I was gonna, um, there were some portions of the improvements that were gonna be removed, um.
Okay, so what is your position now, today, with respect to the size of the carport that you are requesting?
One second. Find the, I'll find the survey. So page seven.
Four hundred and eighteen square feet.
Okay, so that's what you're, four hundred and eighteen square feet.
That's on page two of this.
Of this one?
Yep.
It's on your book.
Page one, page two, there's a name on, on there.
Page, page, page seven of the booklet. Booklet, page seven, right?
Page seven is what the, is, I will, I will go by page seven on the new.
On, on the booklet.
It shows a, a top view of the house.
Shows the plan view, uh, but it shows the survey and it's marked up for all the improvements.
The, the carport is in red on the right-hand side on page seven.
Three hundred and eighty-nine, yes, yes.
It shows three eighty-nine square feet, right?
No, this is the new one, page seven.
Now you're in page seven.
Twenty-seven.
Three hundred and eighty-nine square feet.
It is different there, but this blue book has it different.
Okay, so this is not what we're looking at.
So you stick with this?
I'll stick with page seven of the attached, uh.
So what's on page seven of the, of the exhibit we marked today is A five, is what you are requesting today?
Yes.
The, the carport shown in red on that drawing, correct? The walkway to, I believe it's your mother's house.
Yes.
My mother, my mother.
Correct? That walkway shown in green, right? And the driveway shown in green.
Um, yeah, the driveway, yeah, because we're gonna go to the carports.
A future driveway.
But you're asking for approval for that, correct?
Yeah, it's not built, yes.
What's that?
It's not built, yeah, so.
I understand. None of these three things are built, right?
Exactly, yes.
Right? The, the path to your mother's house is not currently there, correct?
Um, that one is actually there.
That is it.
Yes, that's, that's legalizing, yeah.
That path that's behind the carport is currently existing on the property.
Yes.
And you want to legalize that?
Yes.
Yes.
The carport is not there, right?
No.
But you want the carport as shown on page seven?
Yes.
Yes.
And you want the driveway as shown on page seven, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Now the gray area behind the house on page seven of your exhibit.
Yes.
What is that?
That one, uh, is a, a little patio, that was, uh, built, uh, on, in, uh, I have a date here.
But it doesn't create any variances?
No, this one is actually, I, I have a permit from the zoning department.
Okay, so that's not part of your application?
It's existing, it's existing, it's, it's existing, yeah.
Why is the driveway and the, oh, because they're.
The tree.
Walking edge, okay, yep, got it.
There's like a.
Well, there were two things that were red and then two things that were green, I'm wondering why.
Just covers versus pavers.
Yeah, I got it.
It's a big reason.
Just to distinguish the covers, you know?
Okay, so the only thing that's existing that you're asking for approval of is the shed, which we've talked about, and the walkway to your mother's house.
Yes.
Okay, alright, I understand, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any more questions from the board?
No.
I, I know we're looking at page seven, but it says three hundred and fifty-three square feet on that one for the paver driveway. And then I, I, I just looked back at the, the other page that we're not using, I guess, but it says three hundred and, says a hundred and ninety-five square feet here on this one. Uh, on page seven, the, the permanent, the permeable pavers.
Yeah.
That driveway, it says three hundred and fifty-three square feet.
Yes.
Which is bigger than the one from last time, it says a hundred, a hundred and ninety-five square feet. So I don't know if that was adjusted in our paperwork, or, I don't know, I just was bringing that to the attention of everyone to see.
I think you use page seven as the, as the document.
That, so that's making it a bit bigger by a hundred and forty square feet.
I may have, I may, I may have excluded the right away in that one.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
For my ignorance, probably.
I mean, it looks, it looks the same size in the pictures, but the square footage is different, that's all.
Yep, the calculation goes out to the street.
Thanks, so that's why I changed.
And that tree is staying?
Yes.
If I got a yes and then I got an, I don't know.
No, no, it's a yes.
It's staying, it's staying.
It's staying, yeah, okay.
Alright, board, we good?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, um, what we're gonna do is combine the questions and comment from the public. So assuming you're here for this application and not because there's nothing good on TV, it's your turn to come on up.
Should we go sit back down?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, sir, could you raise your right hand, please, here? Just whether the testimony you're about to give should be the truth or hold true, but not the document.
Yes.
Great. Uh, could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
William Harrison, H A R R I S O N.
And where do you live?
I live at P O Box one two eight O, La Cita, California, nine two two four seven.
But the property that you're concerned about is?
Is our property at a hundred Morris Avenue, Mount Tabor, New Jersey. I'm a trustee for my son's trust.
Okay.
Sure, you can be seated.
That address is the house just downhill from this application?
That's correct.
The neighbor?
Yes. That house was built by my father in nineteen forty-eight. My mother was born in Mount Tabor in nineteen eighteen on Asbury Place. I lived in that house. The house that the two Turellis are in was my aunt's house, my mother's sister. The entranceway to the cellar that they're addressing with the shed used to have steps, three steps, down into the cellar with a drain. And then you open the cellar door and walked in. I'd done it two hundred times or more. There is no steps there anymore, there's pavers. It slant into the cellar, okay? So instead of having steps with a drain like our house has, and all these houses are built with cinder block, they're not built with cement block. So every house on Morris Avenue, including mine, gets water. There's no, no way around it. The cinder block seats, water comes in. When I was a kid, we all had a pair of boots. Why? Because when you went in the cellar to go to the washer and dryer or anything to get tools, you had to put your boots on when it rained. They have the same problem. We solve the problem by putting a sump pump in the cellar and coating the walls. They could do the same thing and not even have the shed, but the shed's okay if they do it properly. The shed that you're saying is dressed up and nice, that's fine, but it's in the setback. How deep is that shed?
Nine feet.
Nine feet, eight feet?
Showed in, what are the?
So it's in the setback.
Correct, that's why they're here.
Yeah. So I'm opposed to that shed being in the setback. They can put a pitched roof, and I'll, I'll show you what I mean, without a variance, with just a building permit, and it's totally legal.
Like this.
They don't need it.
What is that document?
This is a, a drawing of two different roof lines that could be put on the house. They don't need the shed, they don't need the doors, they don't need the windows.
Okay, is that a drawing that you did?
This is a drawing done by my property manager, Norman Chapman, who is in construction and is a contractor for fifty years in New Jersey.
So, so you're presenting it as a potential example of what could be done?
Yes.
So I think that there were exhibits that you had marked the last time, O one, um, photographs, one through nine. So we'll mark this as, here, you could take this sticker off.
Alright.
Okay, and I'm just gonna write on here, O two, okay?
So.
No, no, why?
I have a quick question for you. If the in-town engineer in our letter says that you're not getting water from his property as it is constructed now, and he has agreed to not change the pitch or anything, what is the problem with him just fixing it up?
The problem is that they say that to, and I guess the town engineer says that that drain goes out to the sewer, the sewer drain in the street. Well, in order for it to do that, it's gotta. In order for it to do that, it's gotta cross my property. There is no sewer drain that...
Well, I only, I won't even get into that. The way it is now, he is saying, the engineer is telling us, the board, that you're not getting water on your property from him.
I would, I would disagree.
So why, what, well, he's the engineer.
Okay.
I mean, the test that he offered was, I must have put a hose into the, into the gutters, run the water, 'cause he said he observed it going into the street.
So that's why, you know, I'm inclined, inclined to, to approve it, because the engineer is telling us you're not getting water from him, he's gonna do what we ask and make it more aesthetically pleasing. And the problem? It's his property, he doesn't need, he doesn't want...
Well, it's in my setback, it's in the setback.
The wall is also, he just went flush with the wall, that's already there.
That's also in the setback.
I understand.
That's not regulated, that's permitted.
Yeah.
Okay.
But he went, he just went flush with that, it's not like he, you know, extended past that even.
It's only two feet away from my property line.
No, no.
Five feet away from my property, still in the setback.
My, my question is that you are concerned about the water coming from his property into your property?
Yes.
That's the primary concern.
That was the original concern.
That's the original concern.
But as a...
Because the drain that he put in and then if they...
But he's taken that out.
Right.
He took that out, so that was resolved.
That is...
Okay? And now the drain, the water from his property, the engineer said, ain't coming to your property. So now you're, you're still have a point, however, that this addition, shed, whatever you wanna call it, is infringing on the property line easement, right? Okay, that's your main concern right there.
Yeah.
And last time you came all the way from California, I remember Chairman Iacain said, "Go back and enjoy California", and you were gonna have your man work with them to come up with a solution for this on an amicable, pardon, amicable way, okay? What happened to that? Why, why are you back here again?
Because Norman Chapman, who's the property manager, had an emergency, he can't be here, he could not present it.
But that, that's still when the presenter... Even if he, even if he was here, okay? You guys didn't work together with the applicant here to resolve this issue amicably, so, you know, now we...
He met with the applicant.
Did he show them these proposals?
I, I believe so. I wasn't here.
He says, no, he says that he didn't, so...
I don't know, Norman said he did, I don't know. I wasn't here, I was in California.
You'll have a chance.
Okay, yeah, wait, wait till I'm finished.
You'll have, you'll have, you'll have a chance to respond.
Okay. Do you have any additional comment or any further questions?
No, I mean, I just think that the way this is, whole thing's been handled for the last year, okay? The solution for me is you put a sump pump in, you coat the walls, you don't, you don't have any water and you don't have to go through all this.
He doesn't have any water now, according to his testimony.
And he's not looking for a solution from you, to be honest with you?
Yeah.
There's part, there's multiple solutions to it, this is the, this is why they're here to get approval for their solution.
Well, the solution I presented just now is...
I know, I'm not saying that's not a valid solution either, but they're, they're presenting and they're here to get approval for what they want, they're, they want the solution. That's, I mean, sump pump, I agree, all that stuff. There's multiple solutions to this situation, and I think, and I watched the videos the last few days before coming, I think he's, they've been very accommodating to try to make sure that they were in line with the engineer, excuse me, the engineer and all the other requirements put before them by the board to make, to get their solution in place. That's all.
Well said. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? All right, we'll close this portion of the agenda. And we'll open it up.
Are you going to ask a que, are you gonna ask a question of the applicant or provide a comment?
I would like to ask a question, what's...
Hold on. So that, so you're asking a question of the applicant?
Well, basically, the city...
I just need to know whether you're asking a question of the applicant, in which case I don't need to swear you in, but we'll have the applicant come up and use the microphone.
No, not so much the applicant, I know the applicant's doing what he can.
Or, or do you wanna make a comment to the board?
Yes.
Okay, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, now state your name, spell your last name.
Just the part of the mic, please.
Last name is C.H.A.T. I'm also a licensed contractor in the state of California since nineteen seventy-eight.
What's your address?
Seventeen seventy-five, uh, forty-six, seven hundred, Camille Palms Drive, Lakeview, California. I was born and raised in Jersey, I went to Round Tabor High School, uh, Mount Tabor School, since the third grade with William Harrison. I've known this family from day one.
Which family?
My parents, too. I went to Central High, Mount Tabor, Central School, Precipity High School, and Morris County Bo-Tech. Okay, I've been a contractor for over fifty years. I've done work in Picatinny Arsenal, or the office of housing, so I'm very experienced with civil engineers. And civil engineers in California are very important because rain and drain, runoffs, the other people's property is a big concern. Houses out there all have to have their own retention basis. I know that's not possible for houses that were built up many years ago. But when you start altering things, when you start putting roots in setbacks, what that does, you're infringing on the other people's property. And I understand about having, you know, covers of the doors and, and protection and door entrances. And what the concern is, is water, okay? The water does, will, will get into basements. And I know what they did to Mr. Harrison's house. They drilled a big old hole, a sump pump, just like you do with a trench, I mean, a dry well. All that water drains in there. When it fills up, they have a pump and it pumps out towards the street. They also did a plaster with, with a moisture barrier, with tar, that seals into the walls, which you're saying is correct. The cinder block walls. They're absorbing not only water from all sides, even his family's side on the other side that they put in a big driveway. Where's all that water from that big driveway? I've been there just today. And I never saw that driveway before, but there's a lot of runoff from that water. They might penetrate the basement, too. So I know that's concern. But my concern is, is, um, setbacks and easements and stuff. So when you have a ten-foot setback and you build a shed that's attached to a house that comes eight feet out, and so you're into your neighbor's property on the setback, then the water problem, yeah, it's a gable roof, you're gonna have all that. The way it was built was set on retainer walls, little retainer walls. If you're gonna attach something to a building, that's considered an addition. It's not a shed, a shed is freestanding, pre-engineered, okay?
Excuse me, he's giving testimony, is he an expert to give this kind of testimony and not an...
Well, it's something for you to think about, okay?
But I don't know whether you're saying it's true, if you're, you're, you're saying you're in, you're a civil engineer, you're saying...
I'm not a civil engineer.
We haven't asked that question, haven't we?
I'm not a civil engineer.
Okay.
But I'm bringing this to the board's attention before they make a judgment. I mean, setbacks are important, don't you agree? If somebody built something on a setback...
Yes, but I also say that he doesn't have, he's not getting water for, from them now. The engineer, our engineer...
That's great.
Said that, we, I believe him.
I have no reason to doubt that.
Then therefore, I don't go on what ifs, he's not getting it.
I do have one, one thing that I sort of doubt, and it's the downspout that goes into the underground drain, okay? At one time it used to come across into the neighbor's property. Now they're claiming that it goes out to the street. Did they build the trench and put a pipe in?
Were you there when the township engineer tested it and ran water through it?
No.
Okay.
I had never seen that.
All right. Well, we have a letter
Okay, great.
From the township official stating that's the case. Okay, so take that off the table.
So, yeah, so that's what you did, you took it out to the street? That's where that downspout?
You can answer this question, I mean, you should come up to the mic.
What's the question?
The, the downspout from the, the shed roof that you put on, okay? It goes into the ground. You had it one time going across the property line. They have pictures of it.
I connect it to the original downspout, it was already there.
Does, does it really matter? Because we know what it is today.
Okay. And so did you take that from that and go out to the street? Is what you're saying, right?
I need you to speak into the mic.
It is two separate things. The one was the PVC pipe that was...
That was removed.
Four-inch.
Yes, that was confirmed dry by the engineer, but we did remove it anyway because it was causing distress to the owner representative. And, uh, and then the new gutter line that connects to the original downspout, there was already existing there with drainage pipes going under the street. So that there is currently no water going to the ground.
So there was an existing one?
It's existed one.
Tiny existing.
I don't wanna keep revising this, there's no water coming, going to the street.
The engineer, you know, that's what you're talking, you know...
That's what he did.
Yeah.
And that's what we have to rely on.
I'm not arguing with that.
You don't have any video, you don't have an engineer report.
This question where the pipe came from.
The engineer saw it going from the pipe to the street.
And so that goes out to the street somewhere.
Yes. Okay, we're gonna move on from this.
You have a question?
Bernie, hold on, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we got that, thank you.
Infringing on that.
All right, Bernie.
On page fourteen, looking at your shed, and it's sitting on a wall. Where'd that wall come from? The shed, it's sitting on a wall, where'd the wall come from?
Is that existing?
That was built.
That was built, that wall was built.
Page fourteen.
Yeah.
Did you build that wall?
Uh, it was done, yeah, at the time when I was there, yeah. Yeah.
I'm not doing that.
Yeah, it was built when I, after I bought the property, yes. Yep.
So help me clarify. All right, so, in summary.
Yes.
This door that goes into your basement was just a door into your basement when you got, came in there?
Correct.
You built this wall, stone wall, you built the shed on top of it, right? Okay? The drain that is in front of that door was you also put in, or was that there when you came originally?
I put it in, because it wasn't there.
So there was no drain in front of that door before, okay? So you put the drain in, okay? And you still had water in your basement?
Without the roof entryway.
Without the roof. So you put, you built all this structure on the stone walls, the bill up there, to put this structure on the stone wall infringing in the encroachment area, which is a problem, okay? Right? And that, in addition, that stopped the rainwater from going in there. I, I don't know how that all works, but the point being is right now, you addressed the drainage problem from the four-inch pipe, you got that removed. That was one reason they were, you agreed, that looked like you were trying to hide that, but you agreed, it was all junk. Now, this other issue right now is all of this structure you put on here, you had no permits for, no approval for, but it solved your problem for your basement. It creates a problem for your neighbor, encroachment of your property into their property. That's what we gotta deal with here, okay? Right?
What's his property?
Where's the encroachment?
What's his property?
On the, on the easement. And the setback is his property.
It's my property.
Yeah, yeah, setback, not, not that... We do thousands of times.
Right. Well, that's where I'm going with you, Bernie, okay? As we've been hearing, it's an encroachment on their property. It's not, it's a setback.
Setback.
Setback is still their property.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to get at, okay? So you didn't build anything...
Setback all the time.
Yeah. Okay, so I just wanna make sure I got that right. So we're, we're approving you having a structure closer to a property line than would have been originally approved, but it's still in your property, correct?
Correct.
Got it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Sorry, I do have one. Just, and it's probably an easy answer, so this is connected to the house how? Is it, is it actually attached to the house, or is it freestanding on this wall?
Right now, it's attached with a, maybe a screw, yeah, simply attached.
All right, 'cause my thought is if it's not attached on the wall there, when, I mean, it's still a structure, that could be blown.
No, no, it's definitely attached.
I know we don't, and we're not in Kansas, but...
No, it's definitely attached.
It's been there since seventeen.
Building Department.
Yeah, absolutely, we will address.
All right. I don't think we need to go into conference, reading the room.
Should we sit back down?
Yeah, you're... Someone wanna make a comment?
Yeah, I think they've done everything they could to solve a problem and to adhere to the engineering department. They've tried to work with people, and I think they're making the best of the situation. They're gonna fix their problem on their property their way. So I'll be voting for it.
Okay, motion? Someone, or someone wanna, sorry, someone wanna frame the resolution?
Application twenty-three, colon, seventeen, Marco Tissari...
Sarali.
To Sarali. Ninety Morris Avenue, Block sixty-six, Lot number two. Zone R D S T to issue or grant a C variance to legalize the covered cellar entrance. Addition for carport, paver driveway, paver box, contrave to section four thirty, dash thirty-five, column four and five. Carport and cellar entrance, six and eight, left and right sides, box, section ten, four thirty, dash seventy-five, Roman letter ten. With conditional, conditional, condition with the...
Engineering.